Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, March 5th, 2015. Our agenda tonight will be -- I'm going to skip the approval of minutes because two of us have not finished the great job that Sharon did on a rather lengthy meeting. We're going to -- questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda. We'll vote on the school budget. We have a number of warrant articles, Electronic Voting Study Committee, the lease at Barnes Wharf, harbor improvements. We're going to then hear the police chief search discussion. We'll do appointments, selectmen and town administrator reports. We're also going to be opening and closing the warrant. So with that, I'll take questions from the public. Come on up and let us know who you are.
First off, I'd like to say this is no reflection on this gentleman in the back here. He's a great, good friend of mine. I've been with him for years, but there's been something on my mind for a long time. Dave Arnold, Two Monument Circle. I come here tonight not representing any organization, person, or selectman. I've been a member of the Hingham Citizens Police Alumni Association for over 10 years, along with a close friend being a past chief of police. So I have access to the police facility and been in the site when it's been in full operation. I'm here as a lifelong resident to speak up for our police department. Over the past several months, I've had many discussions with some of our police officers and patrolmen concerning the present police facility and the way it exists today. Twenty years ago, our fathers wanted a new updated police facility, which was to be located on the old site of the high school on Central Street. That's up here where the Habitat for Housing is now located. With some public opposition to the Central Street location by residents, the police facility was installed where it exists today and not on the location of first choice. The existing police facility was designed to fit within the footprint of the old middle school cafeteria. If you look at it, you will see it's small, confined, spread out in the rear of the building, which does not flow together as a good working facility. The noted areas within the facility need a great improvement to do -- do not exist within the building and facility as we see today. The squad room, the booking area, the training room -- I had my fingers. Showers and locker rooms were safe for each officer to secure their weapons, ammunition, and related safety gear. Note, the coming months, we will have a total of four female patrolmen. This is what's been told to me by some of the patrolmen. Does the existing locker room and showers meet their needs? The office garage and storage areas, one existing garage for storage and entrance into the booking area. Office spaces are minimal and small for the following, if any. The detectives, dare officer, school officers, public office where people can come with officers and meet patrolmen, accident recovery office, clerical offices, harbor master office, evidence storage lockers, weapon and ammunition storage areas. Service weapons safes, if officers want to secure their weapons at the station, they have to do it in their gear lockers now and not in an actual safe for each individual. Parking outside the building for police and staff vehicles is small and very restrictive. Suspects must be brought in through the garage area or the back door to get them into the booking area. No weapons training facility. Each year, our officers must pass the firearms training and certification, usually done at the Boston Police Moon Island range. Where do our officers train prior to their certification test? A new police facility could have a small range in the basement like the old station on Lincoln Street. I am told by the officer that if they want to do weapons training on their own, they must join a local gun club using their clothing allowance to pay for the yearly fee. This is a few of the areas within the existing police facility that need to be addressed. Taking over the senior center and relocating the seniors to another location in the town so that their spaces can be converted into additional police space does not and will not solve the needs of the police force. Surrounding towns, Weymouth, Abington, Rockland, and now Norwell took a close look at their police facilities and each today have a standalone police station, which will meet their needs for the next 30 to 50 years. Situate has a new police public safety facility stationed in the works. Retiring Chief Perrino has stated in the newspapers that our police department is one of the finest on the South Shore. With that being said, officers and patrolmen should have a new standalone facility that will fulfill the police department needs and a place where they can be proud to call their own station. We have built a DPW facility, enlarged and modernized a central fire station. Time has come where the town should look at the needs of the police department. There are people that would like to buy the water company, but at this time, we should take care of the departments that now exist prior to adding any additional departments. A new police station could be located at the old DPW barn, the light plant site, property in Bear Cove, or any other desirable location within the town. Since patrol cars work throughout the town and are not designated to one location like the fire department, the officers and patrolmen are here to protect and serve us, being said, should have to help them get a new updated standalone police station that will meet the police needs and the town for the next 30 to 50 years. Maybe times have changed and the town should look at providing a new public safety facility, which will include both fire and police departments in one facility. This is the concept in some of our neighboring towns. My question is, does our present police facility truly meet the needs of the town, police officers, and patrolmen? Mr. Healy and Mr. Gannon would say I rest my case. Stephen, thanks for your support and guidance. Thank you.
And Mrs. Lauter would say, "You're right on." That's my version of "I rest my case." Thank you, Mr. Arnold. That is very, very well done. And Norwell has -- is that Norwell?
That is Norwell. Just opened up their new location. I've been there, I've seen it, and they have their new digs.
I did. I took a tour with one of the selectmen and the town administrator that was there at the time, and you're right. It's very, very nice. I don't think there's a person sitting up here that would disagree with anything you said. The existing facilities, I think we could characterize them as charming and quaint, especially with the new leaks we have. So it is being looked at, but thank you, David. I think that -- would you give your statement to Sharon so we can have it unfiled?
I gave you a copy.
Oh, you did? Okay. Thank you.
With exception of a few things at the end.
Oh. Excellent. We will take that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was great to see you, first of all, but thank you.
Well, I just -- I've talked to a lot of people in town. A lot of people feel the same way I do. Again, I didn't involve bringing up organizations' names, but I have a lot of close friends that feel that the police department has been left behind, and I hear all these other things about departments and this not being addressed to help out people that we already have.
It's a good service to us and to the town when you come forward and speak about these issues because it raises the level of awareness and maybe, and hopefully, you know, with the police department in the community, we can address your issues. I mean, obviously, they're important issues.
Well, there's a lot of us here to work with you.
And there's a -- we're happy to hear there's a group behind that will stand up. Excellent. Paul?
I worked in the old station. It was a sign of seniority if you were lucky enough to get a locker. So things are relative. I understand that there's a need to stay current with the needs of the department, and I have no quarrel with you. We are in the process of exploring an additional fire station in South Hingham, so I listened with interest to some of your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to chime in? Chief?
Thank you for doing that.
I'll definitely second what he has said. And, you know, we're bursting at the seams. I think you all know that. We've talked about this, and, you know, the police station would love to have its own facility, you know? But it's coming time when we're going to really have to do something about this, so -- thank you, Dave.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Has there been, and just going by collective memory, in the last 10 years even, has there been a committee formed to look into this? Has there been any sites looked at?
Yeah, there has been discussions. One of the spots that they were looking at was where the light department on Cushing Street is. You know, there was an issue with land taking and stuff. There was actually a discussion of a police-fire station there. So, you know, like Mr. Arnold said, when you look around the South Shore, this is the thing they're doing, police and fire stations together, so.
Would it be worth forming a committee?
I do think it will. I mean, it's time, you know? So, and, you know, I don't know if the answer is moving, expanding to the, you know, senior center because that would not give us a shooting range, wouldn't give us the more space that we actually need, you know?
Does Weymouth have a range? Weymouth?
We actually had to, when people have not been able to qualify at Moon Island, so we have maybe one or two guys. We'll bring them over to Weymouth. Weymouth's good. Let us do the two guys.
Pistols?
Yeah. Yeah. rifles still?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
It would make sense because it costs you money.
Yes. Yeah, especially, we're all trying to save overtime, but when we go to Moon Island, it costs us a lot of overtime. Where at Weymouth, does their qualifications and their station while the officers are working, you know? So, you know, it would definitely be a savings in that category.
Would you let the public use it?
No.
I thought I'd ask.
Good answer.
He didn't even think. He didn't even stop to think. Thank you, Chief, very much. Thank you. School budget. Ted?
So in your packet, you have a recap of where you are in the budget process. I've done a sort of a draft forecast, a copy of the last one that you've done, and I've rolled in the numbers that, my understanding is, the education subcommittee for advisory is recommending. And that number appears also on the last page of your handout, which reflect the budget variances that we see. I asked town accountant to prepare this, and these are the budgets that advisory has, either votes they've taken or plan to take, and where you stand with it. The main number, of course, is the school budget. I'm happy to report that the advisory committee's work with the town accountant has produced what essentially is a balanced budget to the tune of about $9,309. I'm sure that it's not everything everybody wants across the board, but it is a balanced budget.
So the total budget for education is $45,413,720?
Correct. Not including capital.
Right.
That's the education subcommittee?
That's the education subcommittee's budget recommendation, as I understand it.
And the school committee number is, again, I know you told me this afternoon, but I'm assuming you have it?
The school committee number has changed several times. I did not bring the copy that I had in there, but I have a feeling there's about 16 people here that could give me that number.
Forty-five, eight, fifty.
Forty-five million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Seven oh two.
Seven oh two.
Say it again. Eight fifty-eight, seven oh two? Dot, why don't you stay up here, or Ray, if one of you?
I'll put that up there so you can all take a look at it and anyone else could. So I don't think these are --
Ted, those numbers are the same numbers you and I talked about this afternoon?
Correct.
They haven't changed since this afternoon?
No.
Okay. One more time. Forty-five, eight, fifty-eight?
My understanding is that the budget that was presented by the school committee to the education subcommittee was $45,858,702, and my understanding is the education subcommittee's recommendation is $45,413,720.
That's very close comparatively to where we are, where we sometimes...
It's about $450,000 apart, and, you know, like I said, the resulting budget numbers produce a balanced budget to the tune of $9,309.
Now, are there any new nuances? I believe you talked about a different way to handle sped.
So we looked at that and explored that, and I think in consultation with the school committee today, or the school department, rather, it was determined that that's not going to be viable as a revenue source or as a funding source, and that we're going to utilize overlay surplus and additional state aid, both for Chapter 70 and for general allocation aid to bridge the gap, and that bridges the gap of $450. $325,000 from overlay surplus and $125,000 from additional aid.
I guess I'd ask for comments from Ray and Dot.
Right. Monday evening, the school committee did vote the budget number that you heard just a couple of minutes ago. And, you know, we certainly, many of us attended some of the education subcommittee meetings and were certainly very appreciative of how they approached the budget, their understanding of our needs, variabilities, variables, rather. And, you know, while we certainly understand how they came to their number, certainly we would have liked what we approved. And what we approved was a number that represented a number of needs, some of which were very high priorities for virtually all the school committee members. You know, at the end of the day, the school committee and ultimately the administration has the power and ability to spend the appropriation as it sees fit. So if there's a particular FTE or program that wasn't specifically funded, it certainly could be funded, but that would be at the detriment or sacrifice of something else. You know, the hope would be that, you know, conceptually, we're all on the same page with what the highest priorities are and that there's sufficient dollars to fund that. You know, I talked with Ted just briefly last night, having gotten the full picture of how we got to, you know, from about, I think, a shortfall on Tuesday, Wednesday evening of $435,000 to a balanced budget. So I would be interested in hearing a little bit more detail about that. And then, you know, certainly I'd like Dot to just kind of reiterate a couple of high priorities that school committee feels really should be addressed in our budget.
And I appreciate the work of both groups because I'm really impressed with what you all did, carrying back the original number. And I'm very impressed with what the advisory, of course, my heart bleeds with advisory blood having been on it. I think they have to look at a balance, and I'm really happy they found as much money as they did. And I'm sure there's another opportunity for us, even though we voted tonight, if Ted finds more money, because I like what he found. I want him to go back and look for more, that we'll be able to come back and revote a number. So I'll -- Dot?
Okay. So I would reiterate what Ray has said about the effort that was made by AdCom and that came to all of our meetings, and we absolutely understand the assumptions that they made and what they were trying to accomplish beyond giving us a budget to work with with respect to the town overall. However, that vote, and our vote actually on Monday night, had an underlying assumption about what the state of the budget was, particularly what the state of the revenue sources were as of even Tuesday night. And in the last two days, there has been some additional revenue that appears on the plate, and at least one piece of it is as a result of the governor's budget and relates to Chapter 70 and relates to the foundation budget. So in the event that there is additional revenue, I think we would like to be on record as saying that not all of our needs were met, and we certainly stated that at the time, and that if there is a balanced budget but additional revenue beyond that, I think we'd be remiss in not making a statement about how it could be used on our side. So in terms of doing that, we looked at the categories. We had prioritized the budget requests into four categories. One that was most essential, one that was high needs, and then one that was related to program improvement and a less urgent need. There were the four categories. And as we looked at our categorization of needs in terms of needs, and as the AdCom subcommittee looked at the concept of level services and equity and fairness with other departments and all of that, there was a lot of commonality of thought about what the most important needs were. There were a couple things that were not in their definition, I guess is the best way to put it, with respect to their criteria, and therefore didn't get listed in the funding. And so certainly, if there were additional revenues that are available beyond what we now understand to be there to make a balanced budget for the town, there would be two that we would suggest. One is elementary specialists, those and not classroom teachers, because certainly the subcommittee was correct in saying that there is not an enrollment increase at elementary that would justify that, but an additional need in that from the time that East School was built, we've been sharing specialist teachers in classroom music, in Spanish, and in physical education. And we've added elementary classes over the year. We're going to be adding some more elementary classes in terms of the kindergarten. That's another topic, but we've been sharing to the point where sharing is no longer efficient or productive or even possible. And so we had some pieces of people, a half elementary class, excuse me, a half elementary classroom music teacher, a half of PE teacher, and a whole Spanish teacher, actually one point, four in all Spanish teachers, that really, we think, are in that kind of essential category, and it's been a need that has been building since the time of East School when those things were requested as part of the budget for East and were cut back. So that's a high priority for us. And the other one was that at the high school level, over the last two years, we've increased enrollment. The current enrollment projected for next year is level. So the subcommittee believed that level enrollment would suggest a level funding in terms of FTEs at the high school. I think what we perhaps didn't make clear enough was that last year, we did get some high school FTEs, and we did get pieces the year before, but they really were not sufficient for the need. And so that while the enrollment this year from eight to nine means a totally level enrollment at the high school, the fact that we've bumped up into the last two years and didn't get the need met is really the reason we're still asking for that. So anyway, there were two items that we would put as urgent and in a high priority category, but we're also team players and certainly happy to hear there's a way to balance the budget. But given the recent news about new revenue streams or new sources of funding the budget that we want to suggest that you might take a look again at those two things. The total of those two items is $224,329. And there are two different categories. I could give you the two separate numbers. So really, it's been a lot of, you know, moving about in terms of the forecast. There was a meeting last week that all of us attended, and there was a number then. And then new information just in the last two days would suggest that we want to make you aware of those needs in the event that they could be funded with additional.
I don't think it's unreasonable that if we get more revenues, that we would certainly look to give the school a portion of them. So this is good. But yes, back in the East School days, that was a tough year. That was a really ugly year.
And we've done well, when we, I say we've done well as being the beneficiary of the town's generosity in trying to restore some of the things that we didn't get then that still are a need. Obviously, there's no point in restoring something just for the sake of restoring it. So I think we've done well in that, and the selectmen and advisory committee have been receptive to that. And so this one point for elementary specialist piece is really one of the remaining pieces of that restoration.
Well, we'd certainly look, even whatever we vote tonight, that if we do get more money. And the first blushes of state aid, Ted, I'm sure you got the same email I got, that the first forecast for '16?
Well, we, the governor released his budget earlier this week, and we got the DOR, Department of Revenue summaries, along with a report from Garrett Bradley's office as to what that would mean for us. We weren't initially ready to put it into our budget because we hadn't got a sense of whether or not. We thought the legislature could meet those objectives. We've since, you know, got a better clarification that they actually do feel it on the House side that they're going to be able to get to those numbers.
When would we know that?
In probably June. So it's unlikely that you're going to see any more revenue coming out of the state, you know, between now and town meeting that would help us further this gap. Essentially, we're taking a little bit of a chance. You know, we really haven't, in the past, adopted the governor's budget as part of our budget. We've adopted a budget that comes out of the House or the Senate. And so, you know, it's a little bit of an edge, but similar in the discussion I gave you with why we pushed up motor vehicle, and we pushed that up to about as far as, you know, we've really ever done, because we have a fairly large cushion in fund balance. You know, we have, you know, well into the 20, you know, in our category of 20%, approximately of fund balance reserve as a portion of annual operating expenses. So that cushion can give you an opportunity to take a few risks, but I also know that you're also going to ask for a substantial, a large amount of money from, substantial, I was trying to get out, from fund balance for a number of issues. So at the same point in time where we talk about having a large fund balance, savings account per se, so that we can cushion ourselves against a million and a half snow and ice deficit like we have this year, that we have a cushion against revenues that might be, you know, listed too aggressively in our budget process. All the revenues are attached to operating expenses. So we need those revenues to occur year in and year out, or we're going to have to strip back the operating expenses, which generally relate to people. So we want to try to be cautious about it, and that's why we always have been on the budgetary side.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dot?
To just make a comment on the governor's budget, that certainly we need to watch it, as Ted indicated. There are a couple of other categories that we need to watch in it as well, and that is that the governor's budget funds circuit breaker at the 5C level that they produced for FY '15. We don't yet know for Hingham what that pretends for this year. And certainly, if the budget for FY '16, the state budget, is at that level, we therefore don't know what that means for the coming years. So that's one thing. And the other thing is something we mentioned to you as a possibility earlier in the year, and that is that the kindergarten expansion program, that amount of money of $18 million has been eliminated in the governor's budget, so whether that will hold or not. Fortunately, we did not include that because of the uncertainty, and so we did not include that in our funding plan for kindergarten. So nevertheless, very sad thing for many of the communities near us who count heavily on that for their plan.
Well, we've always been conservative, which is a good thing.
I think so, yeah.
And especially with the track record of the governor's budget.
Dr. Gallo raises a good point, just because I know that there are a lot of math majors in town here, and someone's going to actually take the governor's budget and compare it to our budget and see that it's 140 difference. We put in 125 into the budget, anticipating that about $15,000 will be reduced from a lot of the smaller categories that were not announced in the governor's budget. So the governor increased Chapter 70, that's the big number, and then unrestricted aid to municipalities. That's the second biggest number within local aid. There are a lot of different accounts, aid to libraries, aid to veterans, and those are the ones that tend to, and Dr. Gallo raised some on the school side, they're sort of what we call off-balance-sheet funding mechanisms, and they are the ones that a lot of times will get a little cut when there's a fairly large story about the increase and then there's a number of takeaways. So we're trying to be a little cautious about that. So there is that extra $15,000 that we've reduced, what we think ultimately the state will give us in extra aid.
You know, again, I think we've always been a little conservative, which is good because then we're not scrambling or setting up because then we're not scrambling or setting up a special town meeting, which a lot of towns do.
Correct. I mean, I think that's the key part for us right there, is that special town meeting. I mean, most towns begin their budget process this time of year and don't really conclude it until September, October, when they go back to town meeting, they know what the results of their operations are, they have available revenues from fund balance, and they utilize those along with other aspects to balance their budget. We have never done that in the 20 years I've been here, and I think that creates a requirement to be a little bit more conservative, because you have less time to change. You know, we're doing a whole year out as of April, so.
Yeah, one last question, and then I'll open it up to the Pauls. How, is there a mechanism if more money were to be made available? How would we apportion some of it to the schools and some of it to the town?
Well, if it's prior to the warrant being published, then you could amend the budget in votes, advisory, and selectmen. Once the warrant book has been printed, I think those are motions that would have to be made from the floor of town meeting.
But there is still time. I mean, it may not be elegant.
Legally, you could make changes to these budgets right up until the time town meeting votes them.
Okay. Paul, I'll start with you.
Pretty much answered it, but in terms of if there is extra money, how is it that that gets split up?
Well, that would be completely to the pleasure of the policymaking boards in town, the Selectmen, the School Committee, Advisory Committee. Ultimately, town meeting would make that decision. You know, I would certainly advocate on the town side that we have a couple of issues that we took out of the budget that, you know, we'd like to put back in if there is extra money, one of which is, if you notice, we didn't add anything for roadwork this year. And so I suspect, I'm just going to guess, that the roads are probably going to be in bad shape like they were last year due to the winter, and I'm guessing that, you know, that'll require a little bit more funding. So it would be nice to have more funding for the roads, but we didn't feel there was enough money in the budget this year to ask for that.
But there would be a mechanism, to Paul's point, is that we could all sit down and divide up the money.
Correct.
Excellent. Are we done?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Yesterday, and just so people understand where I'm coming from in this and where I'm, yesterday Ted and I had talked about this whole process and what we thought we could accomplish, and as always, Ted and others came up with some very creative ways to come up with some money, and sometimes things may be aren't what they seem, but it was my understanding that we had money to fund most of what the School Committee wanted in their vote. And one of the purposes of us being here tonight would be to vote for the Ed Subcommittee budget, at least with the eye towards coming back next week, because we would have additional funding. And today, some of those options for funding are no longer either acceptable or viable, depending on how you look at it, and that to me is unfortunate, because as a policymaker for the town, my job, I believe, and everybody may have different jobs, is to try to set policy as to what I think is best for the town, in this case, for the school department. And when I hear that essential needs of our students are not being met, I'm troubled by that. And so it is my wish, and it would be my position, that we should take a position different than the advisory tonight, and to vote a number that may be somewhere in line of what I heard earlier about the essential items, and then come back next week and see what we have, because we're doing almost the same thing I was led to believe yesterday, is that we would come in and vote one way and look for more money next week and try to increase that number. And so what I'm saying is, since there's fluidity here and we have options, and the doors are not closed and making decisions, I would, I was, as a policymaker, someone who cares deeply about the children in terms of providing the services they need and the teachers and so forth, and having been on the School Committee and seeing first how hard everybody works in advisory, how hard everybody works in the School Committee, and the sacrifices that are made along the way to come up with the numbers, when I hear that these essential needs are not necessarily being met, it would move me to suggest a higher number with the open-mindedness, I think, and Paul didn't speak on it, but Irma did, is that we would revisit this before the printing of the warrant articles, preferably next week, because we know we don't have a lot of time, and reevaluate this thing, because I don't want to give up on the fact that what I think the School Committee is asking, at least of their essential needs, is something that we should try to provide. So that's where I am in this.
I take a different view, respectfully.
No, that's fine.
I heard Dr. Gallo, and I found her comments persuasive. If there is additional money that we can consider, she's listed a couple of priorities with respect to the elementary specialists and the high school. So she's identified what monies, if available, would be spent. I don't think the educational mission is compromised by not having these presently. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I respect the collective efforts of the Advisory Committee working with the School Committee to come up with the lesser figure in the event that revenues don't pan out as hoped. So I'm going to go with the more conservative approach that Ms. Lauder spoke to. Air on the side of caution.
And that's fine. I'm not sure that the needs are met even with that money, being on the School Committee. I wouldn't want you to think that that's the magic number, that everybody gets what they need. I know that in the process that we've had over the years I was on the School Committee, there were things that we really were, I would consider essential, and that word "needs" was put in, and everybody has to compromise. We all understand that. And I think being a team player doesn't necessarily mean that you don't need something more than that and that you don't want something more than that. So I don't want to speak for anybody in the School Committee, but my opinion from talking to folks is that they need that money, and they need it desperately, and the children need the money, and the schools need the money. So, you know, and I know we're all working together, and I know we'll do our best, but, you know, I don't think, at least it's my opinion, that I don't think that I have to come in, and with all due respect, I don't have to come in with a number that matches somebody else, because we're all coming at this from slightly different perspectives. And if we can come together and come up with a number that's higher than that number, it doesn't mean anybody was doing anything ill-intentioned. It means we both had perspectives, and we both worked at it. So I'm not committed that I have to be at a certain number just because somebody else is at that number, and I have the utmost respect for them, but I do have an ear, and my heart goes out to the school department and what they do, and I know that they need money beyond that figure. At least that's what I'm hearing, and they can still be team players and want it. So in any event, it's, it doesn't make anybody right or wrong, everybody has different perspectives, and I respect yours, Paul, and whoever, Irma's, whoever yours is, but I would certainly request and would be willing to make a motion to request additional money, revisit it next week, but that's just my position.
And mine is, I agree with everything that Paul Gannon said, but I'm going to go with the advisory number for a couple reasons. And I've learned over the years that the needs are real. But we have a number now that, based on the advisory work that they've done, and also the town-side budgets, that we know with whatever certainty we're getting from the state, because I've also learned, don't put your drinking money on that, that we have a number from the Advisory Committee. It gives a great amount of the needs of the schools, certainly not what I would like to see them get, but we can live with this number. And then we can come back next week if we have more certainty with any new revenues, and talk about how to meet these needs, and then a little bit on the town side that they need. So I really applaud the groups working together. It came together, I know, late, but came together really well, and that's thanks to Tom Piles and his Subcommittee and the school groups that worked on this. So I would go with the advisory number for now.
Can you do a motion?
Well, I'd be happy to do it. I'm not sure you're going to group my motion, but if you want to do one first, it sounds like you and Irma have a consensus on this, and that's, you know.
Well, we better write that one down.
Let's make sure, record that in a minute.
I would defer to you if you want to make a motion, but I, you know.
Do you want to take comments from the audience first? And that, Mr. Hershey, and then we'll take some other comments as well.
My name is John Hershey, and I'm deeply disturbed about being deeply disrespected over this past winter. It really bothers me a lot that a serious breach has been done, and I ask, why did this roof give way up at the Plymouth River School? Why was I sitting home? I knew nothing about this, nobody ever called me. Generally, I get a lot of phone calls, but I didn't know about it until the 20th of February. We've had a storm the 27th, we've had a storm the 3rd of February, we had a storm the 8th, and the 9th, and the 15th. So I ask, why did this roof give way? I'd like an answer.
Okay, if you want to.
Our school, right?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Hershey, so you heard about it on the 20th, correct?
Yes, on the news. Schools closed.
The event occurred on the 19th?
Close enough.
Okay, so that was the next day, I think a reasonable amount of time. Many people didn't hear until sometime after that, that was during school vacation week. Specifically, what occurred was a minor structural compromise in a portion of the roof in one area, mostly in the library, and a small section in the office, which is adjacent to the library media center. It was not a cave-in, it was not a collapse, there was no breach of the roof, there was no hole in the roof, no snow ever came through and touched any of the materials inside the building. I saw it myself when it happened, and I was up on the roof at many times over that weekend, and I assure you that there was no way to know ahead of time that that would have occurred.
I ask what caused it.
I think, John, they're still looking into that with the structural engineering reports. Right, Ted?
Yes, I think so.
And there's several roofs they're looking at, so.
I mean, I ask why did it happen? Why did it happen in the wintertime? Why didn't it happen in the summertime? Why didn't it happen in the spring? Okay. And I just want you to know that I do have the email that you sent out February 10th, and I think you all ought to take a look at it, that she sent around, okay?
Thank you, John.
Interesting. Thank you very much.
In your packet, you also have other budgets too, besides the school budget.
Okay.
Those to look at.
Do you want to vote the school budget first, or you want to?
Well, I won't be voting anything, but you three will. I don't know if you want to, you are going to ask other people from the audience for questions.
Do we have any more comments from the audience on the school budget?
I can take you.
I recommend the school department budget in the amount of $45,413,720.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
And let the minute show that we are all looking to, if there's additional money, that we would come back and revisit this. I think that's, Dot, having been there during the 2008, you know, it's great when you get to be Chair of Advisory and you hand it the worst economic year ever, where we did the best we could opening the school, but both the town side and the schools have been playing catch-up ever since. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gallo.
You can stay.
It's important for you to go through the next budgets, because the way we paid for this is right here in some of these budgets.
Okay, and you're going to walk us through?
I will walk you through that.
Okay. Do you want to give Paul some? Oh, there's enough, okay. Other budgets. We have, Ted, while they're leaving, did Betty prepare something for me for the marina?
For what?
The marina.
I don't know. Betty left this afternoon.
Okay, the marina. All right, we'll wing it.
I think we can just announce it.
Yep. Okay, you want to take us through the budgets, Ted?
Sure. There are six budgets that we have different votes or amounts that we would recommend to you. Advisory Committee has either, as I said, either taken these up or will be taking them up, and the town accountant prepared this for us. The first one is group insurance. The original budget that you voted was $6,820,000, and we'd asked that you vote a revised number of $6,429,881. The difference of $390,119 is due to healthcare rates for next year being better than we had forecast. A significant amount is for our retirees. They will be getting a 0% increase, and as of right now, it appears that our active employees will be realizing a 4% increase in rates for next fiscal year, and we'd been forecasting 10.
That's a lot, because their salary only goes up 2%?
It is a fairly large amount, correct?
Is this number going to get any better?
It's possible. This would be one of the areas that I'd look to see if it would get better. We will not know the healthcare rates for Plymouth, for the Mayflower Healthcare Group, that we are a member of that joint purchase association, until probably mid to end of April, when they have their general meeting. They will have a board meeting the end of March to recommend to the public body the rates, and that usually doesn't get changed on the floor, so by the end of March, I'll have a good idea, but I won't know definitively until they actually vote it.
Okay.
Just so people know, Mayflower.
Mayflower Healthcare Group is the name of the former Plymouth County Healthcare Group, and it is 38 communities south of Boston as a joint purchase, about $120 million a year in annual expenditures. We're the largest member, about 10% of the population.
Are they going to look at changing their plans? Did you say something about that?
No, no. There's currently three structured, three categories of plans. The original plan that they carried, they refer to it as the legacy, but it's really, it's a misnomer of a term, because it's not a legacy plan, but it's their base plan, it's their most expensive plan. And then because of the Healthcare Reform Acts several years ago, and the requirement of public employee committees, and the opportunity the governor gave to reduce healthcare reduction costs, they created two other plans, one about 5% lower, that was the Rate Saver Plan, they call it, and then another one that is about, was at 16% lower, and that was what they call the benchmark, and it was, the term benchmark was, they were benchmarking against the Group Insurance Commission from the state, in the state plan. And the requirement there was that if they didn't provide a plan 5% within the amount that was afforded to the GIC, that communities could leave wherever they were, break any arrangements, and move into the GIC. So they adopted that plan in part to follow the law and prevent people from leaving. We adopted that plan, we negotiated it with our Public Employee Commission, Committee, and that's where we stand.
Okay, and that plan in particular kept premiums as low as possible?
Correct.
But the out-of-pocket expenses, your.
Increased. And so one of the arguments that I've been making to the body down there was that those healthcare plans are running at about 90% of claims, which means that, you know, in theory, you know, we're providing a 10% cushion to the entity that is utilizing that to reduce or level rates in other plans, and trying to make the argument that those rates should be indicative of just ours, and so we're working through that.
Excellent. Questions? Okay, I'll take a motion on that one.
That we recommend a group insurance budget of $6,429,881.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
The next item is debt service. The original budget was $9,608,935. This budget is higher at $9,661,182. It's a $52,247 increase, and it is the result of the decision to go to long-term bonding this April, and it is an estimate based upon our financial advisors feeling that we'll be in the market at about 2.5%.
Excellent. Okay, motion?
I move that we recommend a debt service budget of $9,661,182.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
The next item is, I think I gave you two that was somewhat nondiscretionary. The next several are more discretionary, and the first one would be hard master salaries, the original budget that you recommended to advisory of $100 and $119. The original budget that you recommended to advisory of $160,528 has been reduced by advisory to $151,700, and a reduction of $8,828 for additional hours. I've looked at the budget, and I can certainly concur with their recommendation. I think as they were trying to narrow the budget gap, this is one of the areas they felt that they didn't feel like they wanted to go as high.
This isn't the clerical side, right? Because the clerical hours are critical.
I don't believe so, but I think it's across the board, and it might touch a couple of other areas. I don't know if there's anyone from the... Oh, they all left and went to the other room. I think it might be some of the clerical, but I think mostly it's some of the assistant harbor masters. They felt it was an expansion, it was a little more than they wanted.
And honestly, the clerical person that is doing the harbor master work is phenomenal, and it's cleared up an awful lot of misunderstandings. I'll call him that.
Well, we're getting similar good feedback, so. I mean, to me, I would, since you recommended the budget that I recommended to you, usually a question would be, are you okay with the reduction? And I would say I am. I think it's a reasonable accommodation.
All right, and they can, I'm sure the chief and the deputy can manage that the clerical help is kept intact. Yes.
I'm confident that the budget's manageable. They're objective.
Quick question. I know Chief's here, but I'm not asking him to speak, but is there anybody that would normally come in on these that may speak to guide us a little bit, whether, why we should take one number or the other? I mean, I know advisory has done their work, and Ted's comfortable with it, which is good, but I mean, I just didn't want to leave anybody out of the equation if someone...
Our past practice has been that the selectmen hear the department's budget request and their pitch. Usually in the December time period, the departments have another opportunity to present to the subcommittee at the advisory level, and then also at the advisory when they hear the subcommittee report. And then generally, the departments do not come back to talk to you as you reconcile the budgets with advisory.
Thank you, Ted. The reason why I was saying this, Ted, I mean, Irma brought up a good point, is that there's some good work going on, and we looked at a budget, and now it's not huge, but it's less than what we thought would be appropriate to keep the level services. That's how I looked at it. And there's really no explanation other than there's been a review by advisory, which I understand is, it means that they did due diligence on it, but it doesn't give me any guidance. That's my only concern.
Well, if I could, then I guess what I would tell you, to give you more guidance, would say that advisory reduced the hours because they felt that the operational goals of the department could be met with less of an increase. This is still an increase in the budget. This is not a reduction of the budget year over year. I can go through the detail if you'd like, but this budget has been increasing steadily. And I think the chief did make a good case, and I, early in the process, we felt we had the revenue. I thought that it was a legitimate issue to extend more services to the waterfront, but I think I would concur with advisory, given where we are in the budget process, this would be, if you asked me to prioritize all the municipal ads, I would have looked at this one as one of the ones to start peeling back if I had to. And advisory felt they did, and so I think that would be the clarification I would give you.
Can the minutes show that, and I'll take my colleagues, that we three feel that the clerical should be kept intact as much as possible?
I will endeavor to verify that for you. I can't do that now.
Okay.
But I will, you know...
Okay. Then I'll take a motion. I'm sorry. Paul, do you have any questions?
No, no, I really don't. You know, the advisory went through it and felt they could shave it and save a few dollars. I'm okay with that.
Paul, you okay with it?
I'm not sure I am, but I mean, I understand they're doing their job, and I just, you know, I just, it's just, I know it's the practice. I just, I know we have hearings, we have presentations, where Ted goes through it, we make recommendations, and we, you know, and so I kind of felt comfortable where Ted was in the number, and I know he does still feel comfortable in a lower number, but I just don't like to be voting almost blindly as to taking away clerical hours. I feel like we're, you know, I know we have to do certain things in a budget in one, but, you know, periodically, I may not feel comfortable doing this, and I apologize to the advisory, but just...
Well, what's our alternative? I mean, what do we, go to the hearings and sit in on the...
You can vote.
Come on, chief.
No, but I mean, it's a practical matter.
Yeah, I think I can, here's your question.
Thank you, Chief.
We had requested about 35 hours for full-time for the clerk, and after discussion with advisory, we were down to 28, and we felt that that was, that we could do it, you know? And it was kind of like a step thing. They wanted to see, well, see how it works this year. If you need it next year, we're at 35. So that took us a while, Paul.
Thank you, I feel better. I just didn't want to cut someone's hours just blindly.
Yeah, no, no, it's actually an increase for the...
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Thank you, because I remember when.
Yes, me too.
And we don't want to go there again. Okay.
I move to recommend harbor master salary budget of $151,700.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next two budgets, the advisory committee is recommending to increase the health imperatives from $2,500 to $2,700, and the South Shore Women's Center from $3,500 to $3,700. These are longstanding arrangements we've had with these two entities over the years. The numbers haven't changed at all, essentially, I think, in probably more than a decade, decade and a half. And so I think advisory felt that, I don't believe this is a request of the entities, but advisory felt that they, thought that they should be providing more money into these areas. These areas provide aid in some of the worst situations that we find ourselves in at times. A lot of these, a lot of these, both of these organizations spend a significant amount of time dealing with domestic violence issues and women looking for safe havens, and I think the organizations are pretty put upon, so I will defer to you completely on this. I can't give you any more input other than that.
Questions?
Just one quick question. Are we voting to increase the budget?
Yes.
Okay, because I was looking at the vote, it just says the budget...
Yeah, they were in there at 2,500 and 3,500 respectively, and they're increasing it...
It's this shape.
Okay, no, I just, in terms of the actual motion, we...
Can we combine those motions?
$400 combined between the two.
No, no, I guess what I'm saying is, are we, is there already an existing budget, and we're increasing it by 2,700?
Yes. No, no, there's an existing budget of 2,500.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you did say that.
And we're increasing it by $200.
I guess I'm used to the bigger notes.
I move that we recommend a health imperatives budget of 2,700 and a South Shore Women's Center budget of 3,700.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And the last item is the fire department. The original budget is $400,100, and the revised budget is $403,258. The difference is the cost associated with the defibrillator. And if you remember, we talked about that at the budget, Mark brought it up at the last minute, and we didn't vote it at the time, but we talked about it being something worthwhile. The fire department will now manage all of the defibrillators that are spread out throughout town in departments. They will make sure that they're up to date with software, that they're checked at the right periodic times, and things like batteries are replaced, et cetera.
So this is salary?
No, this is expense. It's cost to do this work.
Okay.
I move that we recommend a fire department expense budget of $403,258.
Second.
Do you have any questions since we...
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Stay tuned. That's it for the budgets?
Yes.
So stay tuned next week for potential of opening and closing budgets again. It's been a crazy year because of the storms. All right, warrant articles. Andy McElany of the Electronic Voting Study Committee.
Yes. Colleagues, gentlemen.
Absolutely. I was going to ask you, please invite your committee up.
I need to connect the...
And tell them, come on, Jude.
I am. I'll be right back. I'm going to take this one. Okay.
You're abandoning him?
No, we're with it. We just had a meeting, and we can't, remedy would improve to his favor. We're working with him.
Good advice.
No, guys.
Andy, you can at least name your committee that are here.
Good evening, Chairman. Thank you. Judd Miller, Charlie Clapp, and English, missing, or Dyke Crane and Marissa Costello for good and adequate reasons. I got you for you. And I'm very proud of all of them, very hard-working committee, frankly. Pardon me. The reason we're here tonight is to request the withdrawal of the draft article 55, FF, that we had proposed for insertion, which would have appropriated funds for making electronic voting a permanent part-of-town meeting. Withdraw that article and substitute in its place an article that would rescind the action of last year's town meeting, that Article 21, I believe it was, that appropriated money for a pilot program at the 2015 town meeting. And if I can explain briefly, at last year's town meeting, we did two things with two articles. The first was to amend the bylaw to authorize electronic voting. Without that change, it could never be done. And the second thing we did was to propose a pilot program. We had appropriation of $15,000 plus $5,000 we had from the previous year. To do, our plan was to do a pilot program at the 2015 town meeting, and then to present an article which would contain a specific number for the cost of e-voting at town meetings going forward. The basic assumption, of course, was that we would be able to lease or buy the capacity to do that at a number that we thought would be reasonable in light of the benefits and burdens of e-voting, and more particularly, its application to the town of Hingham. We prepared a request for proposals. We received two responses. Twenty vendors took out the RFPs, but we only got two responses. And after reviewing them, we found one of them to be responsive and one really not to be responsive, and the cost of the responsive proposal exceeds what we think is reasonable. And what it would cost the town to do e-voting, there's a range, and it would range, the first day would range between $42,000 and $54,000, depending upon the number of handhelds ordered, and the second day would add another $20,000 to $30,000. That's for a one-year contract. If the town were to execute a three-year contract, the annual cost would range between $27,000 and $35,000 for the first day, and approximately $15,000 to $20,000 for the second Hingham, we've looked at all the town meetings, annual and special, going back to '98. Hingham has had 24 such meetings, 17 annual town meetings, and they've all gone at least two days. One went four, and I think five went three. The numbers start growing, not quite geometrically, but significantly, once you get into third and fourth days. What we've learned is that we're pretty lucky about the atmosphere we have at town meeting. I can give you, if you would like, the executive summary portion of a report we're preparing. It's not complete, but if you would like the executive summary, if you think that might be of assistance to you, I'd be happy to provide that or provide the entire report fairly shortly, frankly. The difference between a representative town meeting where there are a small number of voters, typically 200 elected town meeting members, and an open town meeting where there is an unpredictable, or variable, I should perhaps say, number of voters, is a significant cost issue when one compares electronic voting and representative, towns that have representative town meetings and towns that have open town meetings. And there are only three towns that have open town meetings as of now. Wayland, with a population of about 15,000, but takes five or six nights to get through about 25 articles, pays $64,000 a year for e-voting. Duxbury adopted e-voting last year. Duxbury also has a population of about 15,000, and they will pay $35,000 a year for a meeting that they expect to be about 500 attendees. And then Westboro, which is also a small population town, and I'm not sure what their numbers are yet. Andover, I'm told, will vote this year on whether to adopt e-voting. Andover has an open town meeting with a very large population, 31,500, and we'll see what their town meeting adopts it. The difference is that Hingham, as much as the committee values the privacy, accuracy, and efficiency provided by electronic voting, we recognize its value only comes when you're dealing with counted votes. And since 1998, we have had 870 votes at town meetings, and 30 of those were standing counted votes, and only five were ballot votes. And the true value of e-voting, in terms of efficiency, of course, is on replacement for ballot voting, because ballot voting takes 45 minutes on average. And, for example, last spring's town meeting, we had no counted votes at all. So if we had employed the system last year, it would not have been used. Given the relative paucity of counted votes, the civility of the meetings, and the cost of town meeting now, which is roughly $25,000 for the annual meeting, we didn't see a value in doubling or trebling that for e-voting. So ultimately, we come down and say, unfortunately, it's not worth the cost that we would have to pay for it. At this juncture, we're advised, and we hope it's the case, that the price of this technology decreases every year, so if, in the future, we can take another look at it and maybe try it at a different price. So that's why we have asked the selectmen to open the warrant to let us substitute articles.
Was your committee unanimous?
It was. It was.
I'm so disappointed, really.
Well, so were we, frankly. We all were pretty excited about electronic voting when we went to town meeting last year, and we were convinced, the committee as it stood last year was unanimously convinced in that the advantages outweighed the disadvantages. We lost two members over the summer. We picked up one who is perhaps, shall I say, less enthusiastic about the advantages of e-voting than perhaps sees more of the disadvantages. But we were, we were excited about the prospect, but it just doesn't make sense at this juncture.
I'll open it up to questions from the halls.
No rubbing it in.
I have a couple of questions.
Be my guest.
Thank you for that presentation, because, you know, when I, when I'm first considering the proposal, like, you know, going back in my memory, a town meeting, pilot program, it was voted on, town meeting approved it, and I too was looking forward to maybe just this year, just seeing how it ran. And my impression was we could make decisions after that, and I understand, based on your statistics, and the, you know, it may not make sense in the future, hopefully it goes down. It's, you know, it's compelling. I mean, I have a hard time reversing what town meeting voted to do, and I know there are probably those occasions when it should be done. So I don't know how my colleagues feel about it. I still have this little part of me that would like to see the pilot go through the one year and to see what happens. And I only do that is, I guess I looked at it a little differently until I heard your statistics. I remember all the people at town meeting, all the elderly and all the families who have a very hard time getting away, and when you have these long counted votes, it almost discourages people from being there, because they know what's going to happen, well, they think it is, and it does happen occasionally. People can't always stay till the late hours because of family issues and maybe health issues. So I think that was motivating me to kind of support that, and I was glad it passed last year. But, you know, you make a good argument that, you know, about the cost in the long run. I don't know if we could still get by the one-year pilot program and see it, but I would, you know, in essence, if my colleagues want to vote favorably, I certainly wouldn't oppose it. I don't know, I may abstain just for purposes of principle, but, you know.
If it's a consolation, we consulted with the moderator and his immediate predecessor in town council, and this is the appropriate article. And we are not compelled to do a trial program, as much as frankly, we wanted to do it as well. What was clear, we thought, or hoped it was at last year's town meeting, was the assumption, and we made a commitment to the town, that we would come back with a hard number, so that it wasn't just a trial, and then ask you to vote, you know, sort of by a pig and a poke as to how much it would cost. We said, here's what we'll spend on a pilot program. We'll tell you precisely how much it would cost to do e-voting going forward, and we assume we're going to come up with a number that we can recommend. And frankly, we were surprised that we couldn't. And, you know, we share your reaction, Mr. Gannon, because we were all pretty enthusiastic about it as well. You know, we've been to other town meetings that have used it. We've had demonstrations for ourselves, and it's kind of fun, but it's perhaps somewhat expensive.
And I have to tell you, I share Mr. Gannon's views. And I looked at it as $50,000 is frankly, small money, if you're voting on a $100 million project, to allow people the ability to vote in a timely manner, because usually we get large crowds for that particular type of warrant article, and it takes up a lot of time. But I will, I'll go with the committee grudgingly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It really comes as a surprise to us.
But don't go anywhere. Don't get too -- don't back up yet, Andy.
Not the place we expected to be. Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. English, please come up. Yes, we do want you to come up.
Nobody can hear you at home if you're not within 12 inches of that microphone.
And English, 36 Gardner Street. It all is not lost, because in the full report that Andy will make, he will make reference to the fact that technology is becoming more affordable. And so, as time goes on, we may revisit, the town may decide to revisit the issue, and who knows, it may become something that we will all eventually have. As you know, I was very enthusiastic about it and terribly disappointed when it turned out that we just, it's a luxury we can't afford. So anyhow, maybe in the future, it'll come before the town again, and some of us will be there cheering it on.
I was going to say, I see a committee. Any other comments from the audience? Charlie, do you want to say anything? Jude, do you want to say anything? I was really pleased to see a technical person on the committee.
Yeah, we were as well. Judd added enormous knowledge to our knowledge base.
This is a committee that was allocated $20,000 by the town of Hingham. We're returning all but $231 of it.
Well done.
That's amazing.
Terrific. Thank you.
We'll find a place for that $20,000.
The other piece of it is, the bylaw has been changed. The door is open to be able to do this. And when the value proposition for the town seems reasonable, I'm sure that we'll be back. But we did a lot of work, and none of us can stand in front of you and say that the value proposition is there. We totally agree with the concept that there are people that may not come to meeting because it's intimidating, that can't stay for the reasons that you've mentioned, and these all have value, but we can't, as a committee, recommend that the amount of money that would need to be expended to do this is reasonable right now. So maybe someday in the future.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other comments? Okay. Well, we're going to have to open and close the warrant, so we'll do that in bulk, or...
Yes. You open it once, put everything on.
And then close it?
Yeah.
Once. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy. Good to see you.
The lease of Barnes Wharf, or should we make the announcement?
I think you should.
Okay.
I think you should start out right with that.
We're going to be opening the warrant to insert an article. We have come to agreement with 26 Summer Street, the Marina, for a friendly eminent domain taking. And I'll let Ted go over the details as we remember them.
Sure. The selectmen have come to agreement with the owners of 26 Summer Street to purchase the property at the price of $2,995,000. The property is subject to an existing operating lease that the town would step into, that would pay it approximately $5,000, I think it was $5,000, I don't think it was $5,500.
$65,000 a year?
Yeah. So $5,500 per month, I believe that's $65,000 per year, for approximately 24 months. That's the remaining life of the lease. I say approximately, because we wouldn't step into the lease and the purchase until we actually purchased the property. And it's the result of negotiations between the selectmen and the property owners for the last several months. The benefit that the town has by stepping into the operating lease is that the existing operators will run and manage the facility for the remaining, what we think is about 24 months of when the town would purchase it. Like I said, if the town buys it in July, then it might be 23 months, and if the town buys it in June, it might be the full 24. So that's what changes the lease. But what it gives the town is the opportunity to acquire the property and not change the existing uses initially while the existing operator is managing the economic activity on there. It would be virtually impossible for the town to step into the owner's shoes and run the activities that are cyclical in nature for the summer of 2015. A large part of the revenue is derived from slips, and those notices go out to the owners of slips during the month of March, and usually, payments are due in April, and the season is essentially set up in April. We wouldn't be able to effectively manage that, or issue a request for proposals, have someone else manage it in the first year. So the use of the operating lease is very beneficial to us.
Thank you. And you will be hearing more about this. We need to put this in the warrant. And I know deals like this come together at whenever everybody agrees, and we're very close to town meeting. But there was a town meeting, and I've got the records, and I don't remember the exact date, I think it was in the early '70s, the town put together, as a result of town meeting, a task force, a committee, to begin looking to buy parcels along the harbor. So it's been, well, Tom Carey said we need 50 years, right? So as that, and every time a property has come up and been resold, everybody has remorse that we didn't go after it. So this was a very good opportunity. We'll see what the town thinks, too. Mr. Healy.
I have nothing to add at this time. I remember we had an opportunity to buy that property in the 2000s, and we deferred, naively thinking that we could control it through zoning. Zoning works to a point, but to accomplish the vision that I think we're trying to attain, we're taking this next step.
Thank you. Paul?
Just briefly, you know, I mean, I grew up by the water. I consider that area, you know, in terms of the town, a jewel and an asset of the town if we do purchase it. But ultimately, it's up to people in town what they want to do, and we will rest with their decision and be very comfortable with it either way.
I agree with Mr. Gannon. Okay. How about lease of Barnes Wharf? And that's Article R. Is there any new or different information? Ted?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
This is pretty straightforward, as we discussed the other night. This is really just asking town meeting to give you the authority to lease this property up to 30 years.
And can we make one thing clear? It's up to 30 years after the RFP is accepted or awarded. The negotiations with the group that wins the RFP and the town, the Board of Selectmen, will decide the term. It needs to be long enough, because the Maritime Center will be built with all private money, and it's not cheap. So it has to be long enough that the people will realize the benefit of it, and negotiations will take place. So I'll leave it at that.
Just one thing, we were here last time, Ted, and I may be wrong, but just correct me, is we put this off because we wanted to consider the length of the lease and what we may want to ultimately go with.
I think the board has been waiting on this and getting ready for a town meeting, because, if I recall, because it's unlikely the town meeting would grant that kind of authority without understanding the nature of what's going to happen there. And so the RFP and this are really inexorably linked. I've committed to getting the RFP done in the early part of this month, and I expect that I will. I have one outstanding issue I hope to clear and have it to you by the end of next week. It's my goal.
And I'm not complaining, but I know last time we talked, you told you'd get it to me by Friday.
I did. Unfortunately, there was a couple of issues that came up. One of them is a legal issue that I need to resolve, and I haven't gotten it.
I do understand. I'm just anxious to get it moving.
Me too.
But my ultimate question was, is that one of the reasons I thought we agreed to put it over was we were contemplating the amount of years up to, and we had discussions about what made sense and what didn't. And so, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would suggest that it's up to 25 years. And if I need, if that's, if it's, you can direct me if you can.
Okay, so the article cannot be changed, but that's fine, because the article does not actually specify a period of years. It specifies requesting, we write our articles more general so that we can narrow them down with the recommendation motion. So I think what you're saying, we would want to send that across the hall to the advisory committee. They will make the motion at town meeting, and they were under the impression that you were requesting up to 30 years. So if you're going to change that to up to 25, we should tell them right now.
Well, maybe leave it at 30, and let them opine on it, because we didn't say a 30-year lease.
Correct.
Up to.
I just want to let the public know that I notified the town administrator earlier this week. There's one submittal for the RFP, for the Barnes Wharf, and that's Lincoln Maritime. My daughter is the executive director, and I just felt that that would be too much of a conflict, so I'm recusing myself from the RFP. I don't know whether or not what's been submitted for consideration will in fact be acted on, so I'll participate in this vote, only insofar as to move the thing along, but I'm not going to get involved with the Lincoln Maritime proposal.
Wait, whatever you feel.
But I just, I'm letting you folks know that.
Okay.
As well as the general public, of course.
Thank you. I was going to ask comments from the audience.
Alan Peralta, the chairman of the Bathing Beach Trustees. To Mr. Gannon's point, I've worked in the real estate end and the lease, and worked on some, we've had commercial leases. I think you may want to have the flexibility of up to a 30-year lease, in the sense, they're going to have to finance this. It's not dissimilar to what we're trying to do with the bathhouse, where the more time you give them, the more likely the lender is going to say, well, I get a longer term for the return on their investment. So I think the flexibility that Mr. Alexiades mentioned is probably not a bad idea for this purpose. I mean, they might be able to pay it off in 25 years, but the longer the term for the money they borrow, the more comfortable a lender is going to feel. And we did that at, working for Cash, when we leased the East Boston Shipyard, we had a 38-year lease. Weird thing, 40, but similar thing, and it made it more financeable. Our lenders felt much more comfortable with that type of term than a shorter one.
Alan, wasn't there a bill that Michael Morrissey put through for yacht clubs or boating clubs that were on city or state-owned land that they were allowed to have up to a 50-year lease?
Well, and that one is probably, the other thing with the marine things, the marine improvements are going to be very significant. So it's one thing where Sullivan's or a snack shop vendor is working on something on the land side. Marine improvements alone, I mean, look at this winter. So you're in the 10th year, you may have to reinvest in them because of the damage you're going to have over a tough winter like this, with floats and other things like that. So I think, which is probably the reason that Representative Morrissey wanted that, because you'll say the squadron yacht club is on like a 35-year lease, and all of a sudden, you know, they get a major damage and say, sorry, we can't finance it, because you only get five years left. You can't amortize the improvements.
So 30 is reasonable?
I think it is.
Okay.
I think the longer you can give them, without giving them too much, I think is going to give them more flexibility. I don't think you want to hamper them if you can help it.
I appreciate your input.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Alan. Anyone else want to say anything? Okay. I'll take a motion.
Actually, yeah, just, it occurs to me, the RFP does call for up to 30 years, too.
I'm going to withdraw my...
Just because I wouldn't want someone to say, to challenge us if we award it and say, you know, hey, you said it was up to 35, and now you restricted it to 25. So I just, as an aside, it just occurred to me when you said that.
For all the above reasons, I'll withdraw my suggestion.
But it was a good one.
Thank you. I'm trying to be helpful.
Okay. I'll take a motion. I think we just moved the lease of Barnes Wharf favorably.
Yeah, the motions for all of these articles should be favorable action, unless you have a specific thing you want to amend in it. Recommend favorable action.
I just recommend favorable action on Article R.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And have the minute show that Paul Healy recused himself. Thank you.
I didn't on the vote.
Oh, I'm on this?
I did on the RFP.
Oh, sorry. Were you a yes?
Yes, I was.
Okay. So it's unanimous. Excellent. The next one is, all right, the harbor improvements.
Article DD.
Sorry, I'm juggling like three lists here. Harbor improvements. Thank you. Why don't you identify yourselves?
I'm Alan Peralta. I'm the chairman of the Bathing Beach Trustees.
And I'm Bill Riordan, the chairman of the Harbor Development Committee.
Welcome.
It's a joint recommendation, so we're both here.
Okay. I think as the selectmen know, there's probably been more cooperation and coordination between the trustees and the harbor development in the past three or four years than probably there had been in '30, I guess. That's probably a fair assumption. I think it's, one of the things that came out of Harbor Planning Task Force was the idea that a lot of these different groups started to talk to one another, which I think was a good, was one of the beneficiaries of that. And I think a lot of the progress we've made in the last four or five years towards the master plan are reflected in that, you know, because of the fact that, you know, planning is talking with Harbor Development, Bathing Beach, and obviously, you look at the Bathing Beach and the land the selectmen own, where the gazebo is, you know, Mother Nature doesn't know a difference of where one property line begins, you know? It's affecting it the same way. And the fact we have a lot more snow than you have in your parking lot, because we are the farm.
Snow farm.
Snow farm. It's basically the same, and I think that's what we've been trying to look at. When you're looking at the waterfront, you're not looking at jurisdictions as you're looking at the whole thing, you know? So that's part of the, was the genesis behind this article. And is a little bit of real quick background, everyone knows about the 2007 master plan. I believe the task force was formed in 2009, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. And that came up with some recommendations. And one of the early ones was, you know, to look at, you know, certainly stabilizing and managing the beach properly. to look at, you know, certainly stabilizing and managing the beach properly. We've had a lot of damages occurred there. We've been fortunate the last two years to have less since we, Hurricane Sandy was difficult. Two years ago was really difficult on the parking lot. The town meeting in 2013 appropriated $30,000 for the trustees to do engineering. And the engineering was to look at the extension of the armor stone area that protects what we call the grove area in front of the bathhouse. And that study was also to look at stabilization of the parking lot. And to come up with a beach management plan that would be the permanent management of the sand. We tend to put Band-Aids on it every year, like, you know, the sand erodes and it goes towards the, you know, boat ramp, and we put it back. And the Conservation Commission said, you know, "That's okay, but we really should have something that's a permanent plan that's sustainable," you know. And as we know with the sea level study and everything else, this is very topical, you know. And so we thought for a while, one of the recommendations here, and it's already gone for the Conservation Commission, is to actually sacrifice part of the paved area of the parking lot. It's not efficiently laid out right now. If you went down there and sat and stood in the first parking space, there's about 50 feet behind you before you get to the next parking space. It just is not efficient enough to get another row. But as a result, we're trying to come up with something with the Conservation Commission as supportable. So we think if we cut about 25 or 30 feet of the parking lot back and then stabilize it with a structure, you know, a kind of integrated block structure, we can create a bigger resource area, a much more gradual slope of the beach. If you went down to the beach when you can get there, what I consider the Selectmen's beach parcel is a more gradual repose. It's sloped more gradually. Because the parking lot and sand we've lost is steeper, so whenever we get a fetch across the water, you know, it's very prone because it just rips it out. If you remember a couple of years ago, it eroded a good part of the parking lot. And what we're trying to do is say, we've been lucky, we haven't had a storm since, but we're not far removed from one. And before we lose this permanently, in which case we can't keep it, we're trying to come up with something. And also, part of this plan is to start the harbor walk that's been talked about behind it. So the idea would be that you'd be doing that. So the bulk of this article, and I'll turn it over to Bill, a large part that we are looking for is $652,000. And the thought is, at least in talking with advisories, that could potentially come from the mooring fees. And that's obviously to be discussed, whether it's going to be capital outweigh or whether it could be funded out of the mooring fees. But we believe it's essential in light of what's going on, and it's also the first step in us being able to get the money from the state to design the, you know, the boat ramp and to fund it 100%, in which case they'll do all that work, but we have to stabilize the beach first. And I think it's something, it's a logical progression of what started in 2007, went to 2009, went to the study in 2013, the $100,000 we spent on the armor stone wall last year that, if you've seen, came out famously. It's doing a great job already this winter. They returned it a little bit, and we're really sustaining less damage because of that armor stone extension. So this is just try to, you know, preserve that. And I'll let Bill speak to the other part of the article.
Thanks, Alan. I just want to reiterate in terms of the liaison. It helps when the former chairman of the Harbor Development Committee goes over to the Bathing Beach Trustees and then becomes the chairman, and he and I worked together for a year or so on the Harbor Development Committee. So we continue to have joint meetings, and a lot of what we're proposing now is reflective of that. And I just want to reemphasize because there's a sort of a jurisdictional transition as we move from the bathing beach parking lot to the Selectmen's lot to the boat ramp, particularly for boaters, because boaters who use that, as opposed to the yacht club or having their own boats off their property, know that that boat ramp is in very dire condition. John Thomas has been working with, for a number of years, with fisheries and DCR, looking at that. We've got exposed rebar, and we've been told, "Look, unless you address the bathing beach issues and stop the sand from just washing over this, we're not going to act on this boat ramp." So that's important. My principal discussion here is to cover the, sort of, the other dollar aspect, which is a request for $175,000 of engineering money to review the steps necessary to refurbish and the town wharfs, the four town wharfs that we owned. That's the Iron Horse Park, the former Mobile Station property, POW MIA. What I refer to as Barnes One and Barnes Two. Barnes One is where Lincoln Maritime is. Barnes Two is the furthest, the one furthest along Steamboat Lane. The dollar amounts are amounts that we have worked up with Roger Fernandez's assistance and with engineering help from Beals &amp; Thomas, which is the engineering firm that we're currently working with to complete, we hope, soon, the Whitney Wharf Bridge. And so we're, you know, we're confident that the numbers are real. Why are we doing this? It's part of the context that Alan has set already. We're all working against the 2007 master plan, but we also know it's seven years old, and it's probably going to need to be updated. We're aware of the Selectmen's initiative to recreate the Harbor Task Force. I think that and the Harbor Development Committee are where a lot of that work is going to occur. But it's pretty clear to the Harbor Development Committee over time that you're going to have to start by stabilizing these most important structural assets, infrastructure along the harbor itself. And we also, in this regard, reached out to our legislators last fall. Representative Bradley, Senator Headland, Representative Murphy, all came to a meeting, and they told us loud and clear, first, get a vision of what you're trying to accomplish with this harbor. Second, be prepared to put some skin in the game. In nautical terms, it's pump priming. You know, you're going to have to demonstrate that you've incurred some money to kind of assess, well, what sort of things need to be accomplished here. This is akin to what we did with Derby Street, what I think the Selectmen have already acted on with respect to the Summer Street 3A, that we know vis-à-vis the state, you have to have put some earnest money in. So the intent here is to put the earnest money in in the form of this engineering, these engineering dollars. We're also very mindful, I've been watching carefully the interim meeting of the Sea Level Rise Committee. We know that in April, they're going to be presenting a more full report. There's going to be a public hearing. Frankly, after the FEMA MAP discussion, I expect there's going to be a lot of attention paid to sea level rise. And my attending that meeting made it very clear that they're looking at the places along the harbor front where, at different levels of rise, you begin to get back into, come at the retail district along the shore from the back end. So that if you don't address the lowest points, and in some cases, our lowest points are these wharfs. So the other thing that this engineering work would do would be to tie into the results from the Sea Level Rise study that would say, you know, Iron Horse Park, it gets topped right now. You can see if, on a high storm, there is water behind the granite. Barnes Two is clearly just simply breaking up because on a major storm, hurricane or several wind storms we had this fall, the granite pieces are just, it's eroded behind it and it's breaking down. This is kind of basic nuts and bolts of what we need to do, hence the request. The context, and I think this is important for the public to understand, and it's important vis-à-vis the announcement that was made this evening, because I think the town is going to have a decision to make here. There wasn't discussion, I'm sure there are going to be, about how this proposed acquisition would be financed. I'm sure that one of the vehicles is the accumulation of both mooring and boat permit fees, float and boat permits. I know what those numbers are, and I know how they are accumulating. There's roughly $1 million available as of June 30 of '14, roughly $1,200,000 or $1,250,000 at the end of June of '15, and that accumulates at something between $200,000 and $250,000 a year.
About $250,000 a year.
Yeah. So, you know, the question will become, and having been, Paul Healy, at the meeting where this town didn't vote to acquire Kimball Wharf at a figure about a third or less of what we're talking now.
Yep.
I can hardly stand here and say, gee, we shouldn't be opportunistic. We should be. But I think the proposition to the town needs to be, we have taken steps, long-term steps, to acquire the value along our harbor. Mobile Station is an example, almost $3 million, perhaps another almost $3 million for this. But have we, as a town, taken the steps to take care of what we have? And I think the Harbor Development Committee over the last several years has come to the conclusion that we really haven't. If you look to the money that has been incurred along the harbor, most of it has not been from general appropriations. It's almost entirely community preservation funds. And I'm not saying community preservation funds aren't, you know, real tax dollars. But the point is that, you know, the town generally has not stepped up. I think the Harbor Development Committee would take the position, we need to balance this out. Perhaps we need to do both. And we've tried to do this in a very systematic way. You know, what's the next logical step? We've done the armor stone. We're going to do the Whitney Wharf Bridge. The bulk of the dollars, obviously, are with the bathing beach work, but that feeds right into an answer for the boat ramp. And this engineering work for the wharves feeds right into the sea level rise and all of those other things. So that's the genesis. We actually prepared the article, not the article so much as helping with the advisory committee, I don't think we have anyone here from there, with two possibilities in terms of how you'd fund this. Should it all come from existing permit fees, because there's, today, there are sufficient funds to cover all of that. Alternatively, a portion of it could be bonded, using the proceeds from future permit fees as the vehicle to service that debt. We simply put it in, and I think right now there are two articles, one, or sorry, two potential comments and recommendations that would go two different avenues. One, all from existing permit fees, the other, some portion from each. So I think that's structurally the determination that the town needs to make. And just as Paul, Alan, and you said earlier, it's up to the town to decide. I view this decision as similar, time for the town to step up and do something about our existing facilities.
The other thing I'd just reinforce with what Bill said is, just like doing the beach management plan is going to be a precursor to getting the engineering done and the funding for a boat ramp as well as the parking lot, we're fairly confident that if we spend this kind of money on engineering and the town wharves, that we're going to be in a good position with the state because we've got something to shovel ready. Obviously, the FEMA things and the sea level rise are very topical everywhere, not just here. And as John Thomas will probably speak to, other towns like Citrus and Marshall or whatever have been more proactive than ourselves and have had engineering. So when money's been available from the Seaport Council to someone else, they've got a project that's ready, you know. And there's nothing that dissimilar to our wharf, so it's not like it's rocket science to design them. But we need very specific engineering in order for them to really consider those projects. And I think it's money well spent.
John, would you like to say something before we start talking about it? How'd you get it off you?
How did you know?
I hesitate to. All I can do is compliment these two gentlemen and compliment all of you for buying the property at the harbor. That's a great goal.
Cross your fingers. You're Harbor Development emeritus.
I passed Harbor Development Meeting. John Thomas started it. December article put out by Greg Lane quoting the Development and Industrial Commission in how they would like to be able to tie the downtown Hingham to the harbor and our infamous Route 3A traffic problems, which you already know, there's a group on Summer Street that have come before you, and they're going to discuss improving, hopefully, the rotary. I emailed Greg then, back in December. We've gone back and forth a couple of times, but he said he'd love to hear the ideas that I have and all of what you've just heard tonight, to see how we can help maybe the merchants in the downtown tie to the town. I've made copies of my letter to him, and I'd like to give each one of you a copy. And it's just that, it's just both Bill and Alan have said the same. It's just the harbor is one waterfront. It really needs to be treated as one. The more we do in one place, the more it helps the other. I, myself, Ted, Alan, and I can't remember, four or five others, met with Jack Shepherd, it's almost two years ago now, at the ramp. And when he saw it, he said, "We've got to replace this." And they're willing to do, the state's willing to do it, pay for it, and build it. And it's about $600,000 that the state will spend for us if we can show them that we're willing to do it. So alls I can do is say compliments to these two gentlemen. It's been my pleasure to work with them over the years. I'm also going to, next year, I think I'm going to come up with an article for the town meeting about placing a half a dozen gazebos along the harbor.
Oh.
If we want it, Greg Lane and his group, to have people come from downtown to the harbor, I think we've got to create a harbor that people will want to come to. And if we can have a half a dozen gazebos from one end to the other, along with a walkway, along with a refurbished wharves, I think people will come. So with that, I just thank you again.
Well, thank you for your service.
This is my car, mine, and Greg Lane. And this is a map that I made. I took the harbor map, and I enhanced everything and anything that everybody is responsible for. I'm sorry, I only have two of them.
We'll get more.
That's the gazebo.
Thank you.
But again, thank you.
We can get Sharon to make copies for all of us.
Yep. No, just thank you. I'm tickled pink that we've got that property.
Haven't got it yet. Got to do the...
When the town owns it, I'd be glad to come and employ you down there.
Ah.
Put you on the list.
Thank you so much. And both of you, thank you. And I really want to commend the two of you for keeping the groups together. I think that's, I enjoyed going to the Harbor Development Meeting so much because the trustees were right there as well. And that was great. And we should say, there is a trustee in the room who we didn't introduce, Ed Johnson, who is quietly sitting. The issue, and Bill, you hit on it, is we're kind of spending the same dollar multiple times right now, so we have to figure out the financing for all of these piece parts. And you're also absolutely correct. We don't take care of what we have. We don't really give the buildings we have the attention they deserve, and we certainly don't do it at the harbor. So that has to change. Let me open it up to questions?
I'm really interested in what April brings in terms of the sea level rise findings, because I think that that will drive, you know, at least in part, where the focus should be on the walls, I mean, beyond the obvious, what your eye tells you.
Barnes Two.
What their, you know, what the assessment would be. But I do echo Ms. Lauder's views on how this is all going to be paid, and that's a further discussion.
Well, and you haven't, in making your announcement, you haven't yet spoken to how this potential acquisition, you know, will be addressed. There are obviously multiple sources for that.
Yes.
And I'm sure as, in a very short time here, because the warrant closes sometime next week, there's going to be a lot more discussion about this with advisory. I think advisory is taking up all of the harbor articles next Thursday, as I understand it.
Yes.
And I will certainly be in attendance, and I think it's, but I just want to reiterate, I think the town does face a decision in terms of balancing, looking for the long term, but also addressing what seems to be short-term. But to maintain our existing facilities so that they don't, you know, totally deteriorate and erode is part of looking long-term as well. That's my point.
Mr. G.
Just briefly, I thank you guys. You know, I obviously haven't been as involved as some on the waterfront, but it's one of my keen interests, and I look forward to working with you all on making improvements down there.
Me too, because I'm absolutely passionate about that harbor. And it would be wonderful if we acquired the Marina, because then we could keep it the way Hingham wants it, rather than worry about a developer. So we'll have to see. Nothing else? Comments from the audience? Questions from the audience? Nothing?
Could you explain the $250,000 again, what that was from fees and how much money was asked?
That's about the annual revenue level that is generated. That's about the annual revenue level that is generated from fees for either float moorings. I happen to be an owner on Steamboat Lane. I have my own float. There's a fee to maintain that because it's moored in the bottom of the harbor. Similarly, boat permits. The total dollar amount for that per year now is about $250,000.
More on fees.
Boat and float mooring permits.
Is that where the excess tax goes, too?
No. The excess tax goes to the Fund for Dredging. That's the source.
I always forget that.
And I think it's important to, you know, understand that the reason why we've had this accumulation has been that the last principal use for these accumulating mooring permits was to pay off the restoration and acquisition of Whitney Wharf. That ended a little over four years ago, and this amount has been...
Hence the $1 million.
Has been accumulating in between. It is, you know, money coming from specifically boaters. And, you know, again, the question of balance. How do we balance out what's right for the town as a whole? The boaters who are actually paying these fees, you know, that's the discussion as a town I think we need to have in the next week or so, or end at town meeting.
And it's really more than the boaters, because there are as many people, if not more, who like the harbor side. And come to Hingham and really use the harbor without ever stepping foot on a boat.
Yep.
Yep. So good. No comments?
So are you going to take a position on this article this evening? You've been voting your article. Okay.
Unless you don't want us to.
No, I...
Which the advisory committee will have a fit. Gentlemen?
Admiral Dewey. I'm inclined to go forward.
Me, too.
Let's do it.
And let's, with the only decision, but it can be duked out in advisories, how do we finance all this? And let them put the whole plethora of articles, and let's see if we can't work through it.
I mean, if I might just say, Ted and I talked the other day, I know there's going to be concern, it's a tough year economically. But I also think there's a little synergy with the number of harbor-related articles that are here. And you look at what the track record's been over the last two or three years, I think we have some momentum here. That I think if there was ever a time, and I know John has stressed this repeatedly, anyone who's our liaison, certainly heard from John, but I just think if there's ever a time, that we could conceivably try it. Let's try it, you know? Because I think we've made some headway. I think everyone appreciates the value of what this thing is. And I think we can get a return on it. That's the thing I want to go back to, between getting a boat ramp out of it, getting state funding potentially, because 3A, we're saving 3A by working on our wharves. That's the main reason the state's going to care about us. It's not because we're Hingham. You know, the main thing is we protect an artery that has 30,000 cars a day going by. And if we don't do something on the wharves, we have, you know, Hurricane Sandy, that road's underwater.
Alan, give the example, because your memory may be better than mine on this. It's very hard to get the state to do anything. However, what was the storm where there was a breach of...
It was the year we had the, it was the year of Sandy. And they had a problem right, you know, where the Grove area ends, heading near Otis, by Otis Hill. It was miraculous that the state was able to actually fix their area within about, you know, 21 days, under some emergency powers, you know?
Yep, they showed up.
They showed up. It was mainly because of the fact, it was, you know, obviously, you're very close at that point, the harbor and 3A are on top of each other. But, you know, the little bit of land we have between even the, you know, the bathing beach in 3A, or Barnes Wharf in 3A is insignificant. And if we're going to have a Sandy event, and as I've mentioned before, in the case of Hurricane Sandy, we didn't get affected as much. There was a moon tide two weeks later that was a foot and a half higher. So that wasn't the worst-case scenario. So if we'd had that, and a number of us who were down by the water, you know, we had breached town pier, a couple feet, you're talking three or four feet. These things are going to rise them, but, you know, we'll raise these walls by about two or three or four feet. If you look at the new Armistone wall, it's much higher.
When we can see it.
It's elevated 16, you know? And that's the idea with the stabilizing the beach, too, is to have that. So we're really protecting that area, not just saving our parking lot. We're really protecting that area in 3A. And I think that's why the state will pay more attention to us.
Excellent. Are you so inclined to move it forward, too?
Sure.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move favorable action on Article DD.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Ed. Okay.
Do you want to finish up with your warrant articles before you go into the...
Oh, yeah. Why don't we go ahead and do the opening and closing? Who wants, do you want to open?
I've done it, so I'm just going to read it.
Absolutely.
To open the warrant for the 2015 Annual Town Meeting, to insert the following articles and to close the warrant. I'm just reading these.
Yep.
Revised Article CC, Town Farm, Amthouse Monument. Revised Article N, Fire State Renovations. New Article UU, Insurance Receipts in Excess of $20,000. New Article VV, Acquisition of Real Property of 26 Summer Street. And New Article WW, Electronic Voting Trial.
Second.
Ted, can you explain this new Article UU?
Yes. The school department requested this article. They will be receiving some insurance proceeds for the damage that occurred to Plymouth River School last week, or the week before. And in order to spend money in excess of $20,000 on an insurance proceed, town meeting has to authorize that. They'll be using the money initially for repairs, and then later, stabilization, and then later, they expect a larger claim for repairs. So they'll be using it throughout this period. I advise the school department that the town meeting will not be able to vote on this article unless it has a specific amount in hand from the insurance company. And John Ferris indicates to me that they're working towards getting that. So it's more of a, a little bit of a safety mechanism, that if they get the money, we want to afford them the opportunity to spend it, to fix the damage.
I've got a second?
You did.
I did? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I move to withdraw the following articles from the 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Article FF, Electronic Voting. Article MM, South Street Discontinuance. Article NN, South Street Disposition. Article RR, Disposition of HMLP Parcel. Article SS, Special Legislation, Land Swap.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent. Now, sad to say, the police chief search discussion. Chief, do you want to join us?
Included in your packages tonight, Mr. Chairman, is the police chief appointment process I asked the human resources director to put together. It sort of walks you through a timetable and outline, of course, subject to your consideration.
Okay.
The process is very similar to what the town did during the search for Chief Perino. And the chief has given me a recommendation that the pool, which I think is really the question you have to decide tonight, is, his recommendation is to limit it to lieutenants with five years or greater experience.
Thanks.
In the position. I would concur with that recommendation. Or ranked higher, yes. Sorry, lieutenant or higher, five years of service. Sorry.
Within the department.
Within the department, correct.
This is going to be an internal search.
That's my recommendation.
Okay. Questions on that piece first?
Chief, not being familiar with it, is there a traditional approach here, or is this something we've done recently to limit the, limit the people we would consider qualified? My gut tells me, you know, I don't know how many exactly that would fit into that criteria, and I certainly am supportive of an internal search. But I always think it might be better to have a few extra people to choose from, even though I'm sure we all know these people fairly well. So I always, you know, my initial reaction is, why do we want to limit that per se? And I'm sure you have a reason, but I just...
You know, this is, this is what we, if you go around and look at other chiefs' jobs open around the area, this is usually the criteria they use. You need to be a lieutenant or higher with at least five years of supervisory experience.
So this is, in other words, if we looked at the other communities, which you probably have, this is somewhat of a standard?
Yes.
And I'm sure you haven't looked at them, you know, all the time, but is it, does that normally, in every case, limit the pool if you're going internally to just a handful of people?
Yeah, usually what you see is, because you want somebody with some, with the rank, you know, that's been a supervisor, running shifts. And so, yeah, usually is lieutenant or higher, you know?
So is it, is it a lieutenant that's had five years as a lieutenant?
No, it'd be five years supervisory experience as a lieutenant. So you could have a lieutenant that might be with a sergeant for two years, and then three years as a lieutenant. Because as a sergeant, there's supervisor, too.
Right. That was my question. So that, great. Thank you.
Chief, on the job description, why is the must-have a bachelor's degree?
Again, that's consistent with the qualifications of other police jobs, and it's something we've always had in Hingham.
What if they have a different degree?
That's the other thing, is usually it's going to be in criminal justice. Kind of goes with the Quinn bill, you know? Most police officers have it in Quinn, because of the Quinn bill, they all have criminal justice degrees.
Okay. I would cut down, we still just on the first paragraph? I don't see doing two essays. Why isn't one essay, why isn't it just one essay?
David Basler, you know, our human resources director, outlined the process. He felt that it would, important to, I mean, obviously, it's a key position in the town. It's one of the top management positions in the town. It operates a very important department. It's the department that deals with people's liberties. They're the only department that can take away a person's right to walk around the street on a regular basis. And so I think it's critical. And so David suggested, last year, I think we did, we did just one essay last time, correct?
Yeah, when I was up for it, we did one essay question.
And, you know, so his thought was that the pool may be limited. We don't know how many will apply. And we know that there are a number of lieutenants that have this, and of course, a deputy chief. But we're not sure if they're all going to throw their name in. And so we wanted to make sure that you got a good thorough look, see what their capabilities are. And we wanted to also compress the time that they had to do that essay, so we could see, under a little bit of pressure, what it was like. I think what, one of the things David suggested is potentially giving one essay a longer period of time, so we could see, all right, what is it, how do they perform if we're going to let them study an issue, like they do for, like, preparing for town meeting, for example? Or another one, where we ask them to do something in a rather short period of time? And how do they handle that kind of responsibility when they have really no time to deal with it? Like, they have to respond to a public emergency and be able to communicate quickly what's happening. And so I think those are some of the skill sets that we'd like to draw out in that essay process.
And I guess because they all have degrees?
Yes.
They should already have that ability. So I...
So we'd want to see that ability.
Recommend going back to one.
One's fine. I mean, I get the point. But I think there's other ways of drawing out, finding what their skill sets are.
Time-wise.
I mean, I don't see that as a figure of due.
No?
Okay.
Because I'd like to compress this time. You know, if we were going externally, I could see a lot more time between, I guess I'll call them events. But I'd like to see this compressed a little bit, to give the chief a little bit more time with whoever the new chief is going to be. And then also, put into place the process to backfill should someone get the job. So that when Mike walks out the door, it's not as lonely. So I would say one essay.
I disagree.
That's me. Okay.
I think we should have two. I think that the basis as articulated by the town administrator is a sound one. And this is a critically important position in the town. And I'd like to see how prospective candidates respond in either venue. And I think it can be done timely, and I think it can be done effectively. I want to see how the chief communicates. I think that that's a real skill set that we, you know, we benefit from as a community.
I think we did all right with the one essay with the guy we have now, so I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, it's not the biggest issue for me, but I think with the pool we have and the knowledge of these folks that we, I assume we have over a long period of time, this is not going to be a lot of, an essay's not going to tell me too much, is my opinion.
I think the interview is much more important than the essay. And I would like to get to that point. How, so it's March 5th, not the 12th?
Correct. We anticipated bringing this to you. We figured this week would be full with budgets and wrapping up the warrant. So we were anticipating bringing this to you on the 12th. So you're a week ahead of schedule.
Good. So the position will be posted tomorrow?
No, it will not be posted tomorrow. I won't be in the office. I'll have to communicate with David. He'll probably do it on Monday morning.
Okay. And then, looks like there's two weeks for resumes. Now, is there any reason when somebody brings a resume, they can't be just given the essay question?
Yeah, we would want to make sure we have the full resume pool. We'd want to make sure the deadline for the posting has been closed. And then we would provide each of the candidates that we decided we wanted to move through the process, a package that they would have to complete. So everybody's, you know, working on the same time periods. It would be really not in any human resource process that we would create different processes for different candidates.
And is there any way to move...
Moving that 26th up at all, since we moved the other day, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially, we could move all the schedule up a few days because of this.
Well, the resumes would move up two weeks. Because we, the 13th becomes the 6th or the 7th. And 13 from 26 is 13, so that's two weeks. So you're going to move that up two weeks?
Well, everything would move up a week. I mean, today's the 5th, and the schedule starts the 12th. So I'll, we could just accelerate the whole schedule of essentially a week.
You say the schedule starts the 12th? What schedule would that...
Originally, this was expected to be presented to you guys on the 12th, your meeting next third. And so the schedule would come off of that.
So you're saying a week early because of that?
Well, we're a week early. Today's the 5th. And so everything, I think, could accelerate at about a week's pace. I mean, I think we'll have a little compressing of the posting, but that's just a day or two. But everything else would be in the same period.
So it would be fair to say then, the numbers down would be a week earlier?
Correct. Just move all the schedules up a week. Correct. I would say that you'd want to keep the schedule outlined by David. You know, David's done a number of these, you know, not only chiefs, but positions throughout the town. And, you know, you need ample time to review the data and the material and do the appropriate human resource verifications that we need to.
And David can maybe give us a new schedule?
Yeah, I'll just update it based on your votes.
Okay. Also, in the packet, we're supposed to send questions back?
Yes. This is what you did last time. When, we'd like to make sure the interview questions, you know, we don't, we want to make sure the interview questions are appropriate. You guys can have divergent questions when you're meeting, but we'd like to make sure that they're consistent across the board, and they maintain the right human resource function.
Who makes that determination?
David generally does. So, for example, if one of you says, we want to know, you know, how's married life? So we're going to tell you, you can't ask that. I'm giving a wide analogy. I know none of you would do that, and you're pretty well-versed on this. But, you know, this is what a professional human resource function will do, to go through that and make sure, no way, I want to make it very clear, not trying to script the, that's why we're asking you to give us the questions, not, David's not going to give you the questions. He will give you some samples. So you have some guidelines, but ultimately, you guys have to decide the questions that you want to ask.
What do you think, chief?
Let's get it rolling.
I agree.
Me, too. Are you going to say something? You look like you're poised to say something.
You know, I'll do it another way.
Go ahead.
I'm a former policeman. I'm a former Hingham policeman.
No.
And...
And-
It's the first time I've heard this.
You guys are saying, oh, you don't need two, two essays, oh, come on, come on, we can do this, like-
Did you ever apply to be chief?
Is that a-
[laughing]
Yeah, Charlie Southmore and I topped the exam, when we took it.
Oh, good!
Yeah.
Excellent!
Yeah.
Good strategy, answer a different question.
Any other questions?
Good strategy, counselor, if you don't like the question, answer it differently.
I was eligible to take it, and I topped it.
Congratulations!
Yeah, great.
I didn't say he was going to answer it a different way, so I thought Matthew wouldn't say anything, so, if you were encouraged to me answer-
No, it's a good witness strategy.
I'm going to go back to the original point that I made, that, you know, interview questions are good, but I want to see how my next chief is on paper, and I, and I think the rationale as articulated by Dave Basler is a sound one, you know, and, you know, we've, we've, you know, we've start, we're starting this early, so it's not like a lack of time, we have plenty of time to do this, you know, it, I really think that we should have the two questions, I think two is, is minimal, frankly.
One of the things that we did talk about, David and I, and we haven't broached with you, is whether or not we want to do assessment centers, and that, and one of the reasons we didn't was because I know that you guys want an expedited schedule here, so I didn't even propose that, assessment centers would span this by at least two weeks.
And I think the people that are going to apply, they're here, they've all done a very good job, otherwise, Mike would have dealt with them, I-
As people transition from several areas of management into the highest level of management, those are points where things can change, and what you thought you had, you might not have, and that's what the aspect of resumes, essays, and especially assessment centers are trying to draw out, is how will this person who's performed in this function, which might be lesser, perform in a larger function with more responsibility, and essentially no one, no one above, it's a big difference moving from where you have a, a superior who's going to make all the decisions, because it's on Mike's shoulders, and not having to make those decisions, and so that's what we try to tease out with essay questions and, and assessment centers, and we try to balance and weight the, the recruitment process and your selection process with someone overweighted in one area, so, you know, you have interview skills, you have writing skills, and then you have assessments, and how you deal with looking and discussing with other, usually assessment centers are done by other chiefs, so we would ask, I don't know if Mike's participated in assessment centers in other communities where they've asked him, hey, what do you think of these candidates, and how would you move through that, but the whole idea is to avoid having a candidate who's really good at one thing, but not so good at others, and maybe you only see that one part, so if you find someone who's very glib, and they crush the interview, they might not have, you might not have seen issues in other areas that were important, that might affect their performance down the road, so that's why you do that overall recruitment process, I know we know them, and you're doing it internally, so we know every single one of them, but, you know, organizations have done numerous times, hired from within, and found that they didn't like what they determined, not us, but it's happened, so-
Have we ever used assessment centers for any job here?
We have not, ah, wait a second, no, 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 I think we did, we did for the fire chief.
When I became a lieutenant, we had assessments.
Yeah, we did, I know that Charlie Cristello was, was a big proponent of assessment centers, and I think we used it for the fire chief, not the last one, but probably, I think we used it for Johnson, but I'm not positive, so.
Maybe we should, it's just a thought, my thought was, when I, once, you know, I know Chief had mentioned it a while ago, he wasn't going to be staying beyond a certain date, I was always wondering, why didn't we start this process before, I mean, why don't, why don't we, why didn't we do it early, and then we could have all these options and extend it out over a period of time, I mean, I'm comfortable with doing, but I was wondering, I know people, other people were asking the same questions, and I'm not, I never, I never did really hear an answer, but, and to respect to Ted or anybody else, I didn't ask the question, I was just wondering myself, but, I mean, I, you know, I, I think you're going to have those same concerns, whether you have one essay or two, it's always going to have, there's always going to be these issues, and if there's things we can do, and we can do it better in the future, we, we should start early, that's my, my thought, but I'm, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, I defer to my brother, like, my colleagues if they want to talk more about it, but, um-
No.
That's it all.
I take it, though.
But anyway.
Yeah.
That's where I am, and it's, and it's, you know, I appreciate what David's done, I appreciate what Ted's done, I appreciate what Mike's done, I just, I just think that, you know, we're, we'd like to get this thing resolved sooner or later, and I don't think that's going to be a make or break scenario.
Yeah, and now that we've moved it up, if all these dates move up, that gives us a little bit more time, so, if we can just change the dates?
Sure.
I'll have them back to you for your next meeting to, just for you, I don't think you need to formally vote.
Okay, and the, the way I'm looking, this thing actually moves up two weeks, because you've got March 13th as the posting date, and then the 26th for resumes, and that's two weeks.
Yeah, so we leave, we leave a 14, we leave a 14-day period between, or 13 in this case, so the schedule will move back by a week, because we are, we would want to leave a two-week period in that period, and like I said, the posting date, I won't change the back end of it, I'll just shorten up the front end, because I'm not going to post it tomorrow, I'll post it on Monday.
Mm-hmm, but then everything moves up comfortably, okay, all right, let's do it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
We'd be very pleased with the candidates. No doubt.
Okay, we have, I don't think we have any appointments tonight.
You do not.
And, selectmen and town administrator reports, Ted?
So included in your packet is a memo that I asked Betty Foley to develop, she forwarded it to me regarding snow expenses, the Department of Public Works has reported that FY 2015 snow expenses through February 28th amount to $1,751,956, and this compares to an approximate $500,000 budget, so you can do the math, it's about $1.2 million over. The number does not include, as you look, about $54,760 worth of expenses, which represents snow removal on the town hall roof, and fuel, and an additional storm in March, that haven't been rolled into totals, we're doing an estimate on the fuel, because we, we don't have the readings yet, and so I think I've advised each of you that snow and ice expenses related to removal of buildings is not an eligible expense for that snow and ice deficit, which really is a little bit of a non-issue for the town, but I wanted to point that out to you, we have never deficit spent, spent in this account, even though we're legally allowed to. We always transfer money from fund balance to cover this deficit, so we don't close our books at the end of the year with a deficit, which is legally allowed, but all that means is that you have to take it off next year's revenue, so I think prudence would say, and the rating agencies certainly appreciate that our financial statements don't show red ink, when they don't needlessly have to, and so, even though we'll need to make a transfer for snow and ice, we'll also need to make it for the roofs, and we have a similar number coming from the school department.
I was going to ask you, this is-
It's a little larger than ours, and I'll let, let them give that to you, they haven't calculated all their numbers yet. I've also given you a, a report, Madam Chairman, you asked me for this, it's a report of our town-owned facilities, the country club, town hall, library, central fire, and these are our main facilities, obviously, we have more, but this represents 98% of our, the value of our real estate, and it indicates, you know, what, what the damages are, we have not had any substantial roof damage that wasn't inflicted by ourselves, as we were up on the roof shoveling the snow off, all these roofs are, are flat roofs with a plastic membrane, and when a shovel hits them, it has a high likelihood of piercing, and it has, in a number of these areas, we were managing these to our protocol, you know, long before any issue of damage occurred on them, so we're comfortable reporting that.
Couple of questions, Ted?
Mm-hmm.
Does the numbers that you gave us regarding the snow removal, does that reflect, and I don't know if we are getting any type of aid?
It does not reflect that, the only aid we may be eligible for is for the first storm, that was the first big blizzard that gave us the, the base of all the mounds you see out there, and that was the one where, if you remember the pictures on the news of the seawalls south of us just falling into the ocean, we think those have generated enough expenses to get declared a disaster and to get funding, it hasn't happened yet, FEMA is still collecting the data, it's, it's a county-by-county issue, so you have to get over a certain threshold, and then FEMA puts that in front of the federal authorities to make a determination, so, we have our expenses, and we're calculating them, but we don't have any answer from that.
Just so, I know, I don't know, how does it work in terms, let's say that we qualify, is it dollar-for-dollar, or is it a percentage?
In the past, it's been a percentage, and it excludes certain costs, so, for example, overtime that we've incurred in the fire department, the police department, those are very rarely allowed, it's the plowing, it's the snow removal, it's any extraordinary damage, generally, so, most of that money will be targeted towards communities that lost those seawalls, when you saw those walls dropping off into the ocean, that's usually what that money winds up going to, we will get some, but generally, we're on the shorter end of that.
What about the, the police station and the senior center?
Well, we will, will be-
Will be able to utilize them again, or the senior center they had moved because of the damage, right?
They, they'd relocated temporarily, as you know, to our office, the staff, anyway, and closed the facility for, for a couple of weeks while, while we moved through them, my understanding is, is that they're working back towards clearing those issues, and the senior center is, has reopened-
Okay.
Already, and the police station has some areas that we're working around, and I think you'll see some more of them as, as the snow is starting to turn to rain and melt, we're going to start seeing more of this pressure on the buildings, we won't have as bad an issue because, you know, we cleared the snow off, and we cleared the gutters, but there'll be some of that penetration through where, where the contractors hit the, the underlayment.
Do you know if the schools are going to put together a similar document?
I don't know if they're going to put together a document on the damage to their buildings, I do know, and I have asked them to put together a document on the cost of snow removal on the roof, in case that's not something they can meet within their budget, they have some budget surpluses this year that they think they might be able to utilize to meet that, but if, if that turns out not to be the case, then, you know, they have the right to go to the advisory committee like everybody else, and I wanted them to know that they had that.
Excellent. Question? Nope. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
And, one last item I think we need to take up, is the town administrator bylaw vote, we have been asked to hopefully meet before Thursday, to give the advisory committee all of their Thursday to vote the town administrator bylaw, because we can't vote it tonight if Mr. Cannon were ready, right, because it's not on the agenda.
Correct, you cannot vote it, you didn't put it on your agenda, you're not allowed to vote items that are not on your agenda.
So maybe could you coordinate with all three of us to set up a meeting, to come in and vote it?
Next week?
Before Thursday.
Okay, I'm not here Monday and Tuesday, so I could really do that with you right now, what's better, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, Thursday, we're in meeting, so I would ask you guys-
Monday's no good for me.
Okay.
Does this mean you propose to have two meetings next week?
One very quick, just to do this vote, at the request of advisory, so we could do it early in the morning?
Prior to the 12th?
Yes, and that's at the request of Mary Power.
And it can't be on Monday and Tuesday?
Oh, well, I think it could be, I, I can't do it on Monday, theoretically, I might be able to do it late Monday the other day, you know, 4:00 or 5:00 or 6:00, I don't know.
Can we post, though? Now, wait, 48 hours, it'd be Tuesday, right?
Yeah, you can't do it Monday afternoon, it's late.
We can't do it, okay, what about Tuesday?
I'm in a wind tunnel next week, like you read about.
Probably a 5:00, I think.
Yeah, early?
Yeah.
Early, early's good.
07:30, 0800, can you do 8:00?
I can, as long as we've got, everybody else can do it, I don't want to-
8:00 AM?
I'm good, I'm an early person, so-
Tuesday, here?
The only thing is, we're going to have to make apologies to the public that it won't be televised.
Wednesday, what?
Well, Wednesday gives them only one day.
All right, Tuesday, 8:00.
Okay.
Sold.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that won't be televised.
All right, so we'll be posting an agenda for you for Tuesday, 8:00 AM, a one-item agenda, just this item?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Okay, anything else, Ted?
I don't have anything else.
Paul?
Um, yeah, actually, I do, I want to note the, the four fastest girls in the state.
Oh, gotta be Ciara, gotta be Ciara.
Dee Fuehens, Sarah Endike, and Olivia Candari.
Awesome.
All the fastest record in the floor by 200, both in the state-
Awesome.
And Hingham High, so, well done, ladies.
Awesome, go Ciara, run!
The boys' hockey's been rescheduled to tomorrow at 4:30, so we didn't miss a game tonight, I guess for all the snow, all the cake, it was canceled.
So tomorrow, where's it being played at?
Gallo in, in Bourne, and they're playing, they're playing barnstable, I believe, and that'll be a heck of a game, so I'm hoping to get there.
Yeah, me too, if it's, yeah, 4:30, that would work, okay, that's it?
I think that's it, I could go on, but I think that's it.
Why don't you put this up, we've been asked, Jeff Tacchio, Warren Pelisir, and Tom Hoffman have asked that we share this, and we told them they didn't have to come, because at this hour, sitting through our very exciting meeting to read this, so this is, the Hingham Business Council and SNAP, which is the South Shore Special Needs Athletic Partnership, is announcing a Hingham Pizza Palooza pizza competition, the Hingham Business Council is sponsoring Hingham's first-ever Pizza Palooza pizza competen, competition, with all proceeds going to the South Shore Special Needs Athletic Partnership, local pizza shops will bring their pizzas to the Hingham High School cafeteria, now write this down, on March 25th, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM, Hingham residents are invited to turn out, sample all of the slices, and then immediately sign up for a gym, and vote for their favorite purveyor of pizza, the three categories in competition are, people's choice best slice, to be decided by a popular vote, kids' choice of vote, award voted by the young, and judges' choice, to be decided by an esteemed panel of celebrity judges, tickets are $10 per person, or $30 for families, and can be purchased at the door, all ticket proceeds to benefit SNAP, which develops and offers athletic and recreational activities for special needs kids in Hingham, there will be also many raffle prizes and special dessert and pastry selections will be available due to the interest of several other restaurants and bakeries, it's my kind of event, this is going to be an important event for our community, and the money raised will fund activities for very important and valued members of our community, we encourage everyone to attend on Wednesday, March 25th, and we'll put this up on our website, so please come, I only have, I've got two things, the Plymouth County Study Committee met this past Monday night, and it was a very good meeting, Plymouth County is still really struggling with their budgets, while the governor kept state aid and local aid, and aid to schools as whole as he could, actually, whole, there were 9C cuts which did affect the county, and that has affected their budget, closing their budget for 2014, and the go-forward budget, and the next meeting, they're going to invite Representative Bradley and Senator Headland in to talk to the committee, so I encourage everybody to watch for that, and then attend if you can, and the last thing I have is something that I keep trying, remembering to bring, and I remembered tonight, Bob Beal, in his travels down south, saw this parking spot in a number of restaurants, I've asked the Veterans Council to opine on it, I've talked to Sergeant Durth from the Traffic Committee, and I've also talked to Chief Perino, and I'd like my- And I'd like my colleagues to think about this, and we'll get your copies. Is it something we want to do? It's one more thing to do for the veterans? It's not an enforceable parking space, which is why the Traffic Committee doesn't need to take a position on it. But it's something I'd like to think about us doing if we can ever find our parking spaces again. So, a thought. Oh, I'm sorry, can you see it?
Sorry, it's a reserved parking spot for veterans.
Yeah. It's kind of neat. There are other ones down south where they're for Purple Heart recipients, but this one appeals to a much larger community. It's kind of neat. So we can talk about that at some time, and I finally remembered to bring this in. But the, pardon me?
This is a picture from a parking lot elsewhere in the country. We haven't decided. They haven't thought about where. Just talked about the issue of whether or not to do it.
Just some thought that we might want to do this. Anything else? Nothing?
No.
Okay. Then I recommend the Board enter executive session to act under the provisions of Mass General Law 30A, paragraph 21 dot A dot 7, to comply with the open meeting law. The Board will not resume open session this evening. Roll call, vote.
What is the purpose of going into open, into executive session?
To discuss the minutes that have not been approved from December 18th.
Those were voted on publicly.
We rescinded that.
Paul, I didn't vote for that. I voted what was represented to me and there was no hard copy, and it was rescinded in any event, but you, we can-
We, we should do, I saw what you proposed to vote. I'm going to vote against it. I think the cleaner way to do it is just propose it, you two vote it, I'll oppose it. Going into executive session.
We're going into executive session if we vote, and I assume we will. If you don't want to participate, you do, but I would hope you would participate, and I'll leave it at that. And it's up to you. But I'm voting aye on it and-
And I'm voting aye.
And we're going to continue to discussion on the issue matter, but I respect whatever you have to say, but I'd like you to be there.
I oppose going into executive session.
Say, Mass General Law 30A.
No, I know the law. Which exception under the law?
It's exception seven.
We voted these minutes publicly.
And we rescinded them.
Publicly.
Correct.
So let's just-
You discussed them publicly too, which makes them public.
Yeah, let's just do the conversation here and just get it over with.
I'm not only because I'm taking legal counsel's advice, they told us we should discuss them in executive session and we should vote them, and then if we vote, we're going to release them at the next meeting. And no offense to you, Counsel, but I'm going to, I'm going to defer to my legal counsel of the town.
John Cofflin?
John Cofflin. Absolutely.
Well, that's the first I've heard of that. I'm at a loss to respond because I don't want to, I just don't have the information that he provided to you, frankly.
I think Betty has two and 10, I doubt, but I mean, this has been a discussion that's been ongoing, I believe.
Well, I mean, I've moved to release the minutes that were in executive session that were approved. You know, you've, you've stood out of it.
No offense, but you, what you have supposedly introduced was, was initially an unredacted version of a draft. You never moved to approve the minutes that were, that were voted on because they were rescinded, and we didn't put them in because it was a mistake that I talked to Betty the other day about. I mean, I can, I don't want to get into it here, but, you know, I'm not going to say another word. I'm ready to go into the executive session and I'll vote aye, so.
And I did too.
Yeah, no, I, you guys, two to one, you're calling the shots, but I just think it's bad.
We need you in there to discuss this because the minutes that we voted on, we trusted Betty, because it came out very late in the day, that they were the minutes that were agreed upon. We did not have a paper copy. I think you said you did.
You're talking about a 23-year town employee, 19 years impeccable service on the Board of Selectmen.
I'm not talking, I am not talking about that at all. The minutes that were sent out to us were not the one that we agreed to.